I've been asked if everyone...
What are you doing?
Yes, sir.
You're an invocation.
I am supposed to.
And the penitentiary.
This is a beautiful place to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a prayer of it. Yeah, I'll do whatever they tell me to do. And I don't know if you know, this is going to be nice or something. Really, Steve?
Jeffrey's doing it, yeah.
Yeah, it's a freemium. Right then, and I'll call them up one at a time before they do the prayer of installation after I do the host.
Welcome in. I'm proud to be a part of this swearing-in ceremony tonight. We're going to install ten new city council members and one for a second term. This is a big one. We're also going to install our first new mayor in twenty years. We've done a little research this afternoon just to put this in perspective. Since eighteen eighty-eight, the city of Sumter has had only twenty-five mayors. So this is a bid, I think, to signal even more Sumter. This is a big and important and historic night in the city of Sumter. On behalf of the city, your city, I thank all of the family and friends of those we honor tonight for supporting them and letting them serve. I also want to thank all citizens in attendance for their interest in our city government. We will come closer to realizing our full potential as a city, as more and more citizens show pride in our city, and take the time to know what's going on in city government. By attending tonight, you show the pride and interest that can make Sumter an even better place. We're honored to have leaders from Charlotte or Spaceman Tennis tonight. I hope I have all the names from the Twenty Fighter Wing, Colonel Ryan Lindman, and from, please. And from U.S. Army Central Federal Army, Armando, Colonel Armando Hernandez. We also have elected officials here, but I do not have a list, so I would just ask if any elected officials who are here to share this information, would you please rise and be recognized? There's three of us, city council members who are not overstaying tonight. Councilman Thomas B. Lowry, our mayor pro team. Councilman Calvin Hasty. And Councilman Davis, Colin Davis. And then I see Ms. Dwyer, Ireland Dwyer, fourteen years old, city council, retiring this evening as well. We're honored to have all of you here. At this time, I want to ask Dr. W. Clay Smith, pastor at Alastra Baptist Church, to give our invocation.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gifts of liberty, the gifts of choosing our own leader. You have given us a great responsibility, and we thank you that in this election, we were able to choose between highly qualified people. And now, Father, we commend them to your care. We pray that you would give them wisdom. We pray that you would give them strength. We pray that you would give them patience. May they live out love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, gentleness, generosity, faithfulness, and self-control, especially self-control, for they have a high responsibility. Please bless your servants, James, Stephen, Gifford, and David, as they take the office that they have been elected to. And Father, we would be remiss if we did not give thanks for your provision of giving us a good leader for these past twenty years. Please bless and continue to guide your servant, Joe McElveen. And thank you, Father, for sending him to us. Now bless our time together, for it is in your name, in the name of your son, that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Smith. We are honored tonight to have a special guest singing our national anthem. Ms. Nadja Blasingame, granddaughter of Reverend James Blasingame, who is being sworn in tonight, will give us the national anthem. Nadja?
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proud only we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars throughout the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we've watched were so gallantly streaming? At the rocket's red glare the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Nadja. I'm going to now turn the program over to Associate Justice George C. James Jr. of the South Carolina Supreme Court. We in Sumter are proud to have a citizen of our city serving on the highest court in South Carolina. Justice James, you've always been willing to help with these ceremonies, and I'm most appreciative for that and for your love of Sumter. Justice James will call the names of those to be sworn in to join him in the order they are listed on the program. At that time, family members will join the council person-elect. After the swearing-in, we'll have a prayer of installation after each person who is sworn in. Justice James.
I first call the Honorable James B. Blasingame to come forward to be sworn in. Put your left hand on the Bible. Other way, raise your right hand and step closer to the microphone. And repeat after me. I, James B. Blasingame.
I, James B. Blasingame.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of this office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will.
That I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
As a council member of the city of Sumter.
As a council member of the city of Sumter.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skills.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavors.
And I will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Let us pray. O Lord, our God, we come to say thank you for being our God for your strength, your love, peace, and presence. But I would thank you for your servant, Dr. James B. Blasingame. It represents war too, this great city of Sumter. O Lord, I pray for your Spirit be upon him as he lead your people, your community, as he stand the gap for young people, parents, families, schools, businesses, churches, this great community. Well, I pray to God he continue to have the heart like David. Continue, God, to grant him wisdom as he did Solomon. And Father, I pray that you speak to him as you did to Joshua. Where you said, "Do not be afraid or fearful or discouraged. Forever you go, I'll be with you." The earth and vote may not be popular, but he will stand. Stand on your word, stand with your spirit. O Lord, for his dear wife. Tell the Lord to bind them together. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now call for the Honorable Stephen H. Corley. You can get close to the microphone. If you please, repeat after me. I, Stephen H. Corley.
I, Stephen H. Corley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will to the best of my ability.
And I will to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
As a council member of the city of Sumter.
As a council member of the city of Sumter.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust imposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavors.
I will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
Purposes which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Almighty God, to whom we must account for all our powers and privileges, guide and direct, we humbly pray, the mind of your servant, Stephen, who has been called to serve as a city councilman. And I pray that, Lord, his mind will, as he exercises his duties, that he may promote your glory and the welfare of Sumter. This we ask for the sake of your Lord and Savior, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Now call Gifford M. Shaw to the podium to be sworn. Put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. You get close to the microphone. You might want to turn that way. Right at me. I, Gifford M. Shaw.
I, Gifford M. Shaw.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will to the best of my ability.
And I will to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, and protect, and pretend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
As a council member of the city of Sumter.
As a council member of the city of Sumter.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavors.
And I will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Almighty God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, we are thankful for your servant, Gifford. We are thankful that you have given him a desire to serve. We are thankful that you have given him a desire to serve this community. And we are asking that you would fill him, Holy Spirit. Give him power, wisdom, the ability to do what is best for this community in the role that you have given him. Lord, we are thankful that you have caused him to love this community well. And our desire is that he will continue to love Sumter even better in the next few years. Will you continue to encourage him and grow him in the role that you've given him? And in all things, cause him to act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you, his God. In the name of Jesus, we pray this. Amen.
I now call the Honorable David P. Merchant to be sworn in as mayor. And repeat after me. I, David P. Merchant.
I, David P. Merchant.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
As mayor of the city of Sumter.
As mayor of the city of Sumter.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavors.
And I will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes of which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Ephesians 3:22-21 says, "Now unto him we can do all things above and beyond all we can ever expect, think, or imagine, according to his power that dwelleth within us and all generations to come." Let us pray. Mayor-elect. Mayor of Sumter, South Carolina. Mayor David P. Merchant. Dear God, in a few moments, we will install our new mayor, your new mayor, our new mayor of Sumter, South Carolina. Lord, we lift up the light of knowledge to your mayor-elect. Give him clarity to promote county-wide community revitalization. Give him clarity to see that public schools have the same probability of success as private. God, that Sumter would be one county united for common good in the name of Jesus, the name that can save an entire county. Under Mayor Merchant's leadership, we pray for justice, peace, a healthy society, a dignified county where there is no hunger and no racial division. God, watch over Mayor Merchant's wife, Lori, and the four beautiful children. Watch over his business, his employees. Watch over the citizens of Sumter. Cover Sumter with security, freedom, and peace. God bless our county, state, and our country. As you are the same God who puts kings on thrones, presidents in the White House, governors in the State House, and tonight, mayor of a municipality to include Shaw-Sumter community. God, we thank you for Hancock City. May the results of Mayor Merchant's display your glory. And as the install begins, let the glory be God's. Amen.
If I could, if just a minute, I see some former city council members here. Would any former city council members and mayors please stand? Steve Creach, I saw you. That's what reminded me of it. Would any former members of council who are here, please rise or raise your hand? See Councilman Yates, Councilman Bob Galliano. Think it's important that they are here for this event, which is one of continuity. With this, I'm going, we're going to give each of the persons sworn in tonight an opportunity to make remarks. And I will first call on Reverend Blessingame, Councilman Blessingame.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the newly-elected mayor and members of council, to our family, to all of the citizens of Sumter, our special guests who've come from out of town tonight to be with us. I consider it a high honor to have been elected by the citizens of Ward 2 to serve in this capacity as your council member. And I'm excited, I'm grateful, I look forward to working with this council as we continue to move Sumter forward. As I said during my campaign, Sumter is a wonderful city, a great place to work, live, and play. And I want to do my part to help keep the momentum going. So please feel free to call upon us. We're here to serve you. I want to thank my lovely wife, who's here tonight, my daughter and my grandchildren here, and other family members and friends, members of our church, of our Zion. Thank you so much, and to our fraternity brothers and friends who've come to share. I do want to acknowledge a dear friend of ours, the Honorable Mayor of Heat Springs, South Carolina, the Honorable Reverend Eddie Moore and his wife, who drove all the way down from Heat Springs to be with us tonight. God bless all of you. Pray for us as we will continue to pray for you. God bless you.
It's an honor to, and I feel humbled to serve again in Ward 4, the historic downtown area and Crawswell. But we represent, I represent not just Ward 4, but the entire city. And thank you for supporting or re-electing me.
Next, Councilman Gifford Shaw.
Thank you all for being here tonight. And it's a humbling thing to stand here, to put your hand on the word of God, to stand beside your wife for 42 years, to look out and see parents and children and friends and loved ones, and to really realize that God in His grace has been kind to me to keep me faithful in a way in which you invoked for me for office in your city. And I am very thankful and grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gifford. And now our new mayor, David Merchant.
Again, first, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for taking time out of your busy day, evening, to come out and be a part of this. It was just said, it's truly been humbling, the amount of support and outreach we've received, our family, throughout this journey. Supporters, the volunteers, the random act of kindness, random acts of kindness that our families witnessed through this process. From the encouraging texts to the supper that just shows up on the long days, to someone volunteering to take the boys to practice, just the little things that add up. We really appreciate all of those that have come alongside of us through this journey. Most importantly, I want to thank Lori and the kids for their support. I couldn't have and wouldn't have done this without you. Lori, thank you for the love and support throughout all my endeavors over the years. Thanks for being my best friend, being my biggest cheerleader. I love you. Kids, thanks for hanging there with me. Thanks for being a part of this journey as Team Merchant. Thanks for putting up another sign and hanging another door hanger and hanging another door hanger and hanging another door hanger. Right, Sam? In all seriousness, always remember the things that we did and the people that we met along the way. Like your grandfather Billy said, "We are stronger together than individually." Remember, together, we were strong and supported each other through this journey, and we did the hard things. Always do the hard things. Now, some of you know, I started thinking about running for an office back in '06, but the timing wasn't right at that time. However, I was able to serve on some local boards, and I understood how local government worked and how it could help people and influence folks in our community. And in 2012, we decided to give it a shot and ran for a city council position and won. And we've served for the last eight years. And I say that because our reason for running for mayor hasn't changed from that original run at council. It's about the fact that Lori and I chose to move back to Sumter, open a business and raise a family. We were welcomed by Sumter, and we felt it was our job to help improve Sumter in some way, just as many of you do. Just as you serve on boards at your churches or boards in the community or volunteer for Little League sports, volunteer at schools. Each and every one of you do something to influence our community to a positive. We have folks here from all different backgrounds, in all parts of town, in all parts of the country. Whether you're our military friends that are here for just a few years or the lifelong residents, we all have one thing in common tonight. We call Sumter home, and we want it to be the best home it can be. That's why you're here. That's why you do what you do. Your service shows that you care about our city and our community. You too are working to improve Sumter in your own way. To this, I say thank you, and please continue on. I've always been taught to honor and respect the past, but keep working towards the future. Many people have come before me to make Sumter a unique and special place. One of those people is Mayor Joe McElveen. And I would be remiss, as he recognized all of many others in the crowd tonight, but to recognize Mayor McElveen for his service. Mayor McElveen and his past councils have had a tremendous impact on our city over his tenure. His leadership and dedication to Sumter has set an example of what true servant leadership is. It has been a great eight years to be able to witness this firsthand, serving on him on council. Thank you, Joe. But as I look towards the future, I'm excited. I'm excited about our new council and the new ideas that will be brought to the table. I'm excited about the positive momentum we can build off of. For example, just this past August, Sumter was recognized as one of the top 20 cities in the country by the National League of Cities. What does this mean? It means we have the resources, the staff, the infrastructure, and the incredible citizens to make Sumter awesome. Team Sumter is on the brink of greatness. I want everyone, I want to invite everyone to join in. Let's be part of something special. Let's be part of something special together. Unifying and transforming Sumter for the next generation is our job. Our youth and children need us to do this, and we need to do it together as a community. To our employees and staff, our senior leaders all the way down to the new guy, I got your back. We on council recognize that the heartbeat of any organization is its people. The workers behind the scenes grinding every day to keep the city safe and running, keep clean water in our faucets, keep the garbage picked up, making that late-night fire call or police call, all of those folks and many others that just do the little things every day, we appreciate you. And we thank you for this often thankless job that you do. But every employee has a role to play in the future success of Sumter. Continue to approach your job every day with excellence, knowing that you can also make a positive impact on someone, even though it may not seem that at the moment, but you can. And again, we thank you for your work. In closing, as I assume the role as mayor, you can count on a few things from me. You can count on an unwavering commitment to excellence, to hold this office in regard, to embrace our citizens, and to do everything to the best of my ability. You can then count on an inclusive vision, where we include everyone in our city and try to bring up everybody. And you can count on me for a blue-collar work ethic, where we go to work every day, one day at a time, to make Sumter better. I look forward to this opportunity. At the end of the day, I'm just a welder that the Lord has blessed. I've been blessed with a family that loves me, by friends that support and encourage me, and a city that has welcomed me. Thank you.
Take this mask off because my glasses fog up and I can't read. As I look around and see this large crowd here tonight, I want to be, give special thanks to County Council Chair Jim McCain and the Sumter County for allowing us to use this building. We very much wanted to have a ceremony like this because this is such an important day in the life of a city. And this facility has made it possible for us to come together. And I would ask you to continue to wear your mask and practice social distancing as we end the program tonight. This large crowd just says so much to me. If we all continue to listen to what David said and follow the leadership of him and the council, there's no limit to what we can achieve. I just want to say that as I leave office, I've never been more encouraged about the future of Sumter. And I want to say that it's been my honor and my privilege to serve. I love this community. Thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to leave you and give you, once again, Mayor David Merchant.
We'll close tonight with a prayer. Again, thank you for everyone coming. Please hang around and enjoy yourself. Enjoy the evening. Let's pray. Our Father, tonight as we have gathered, we are reminded of indeed how good and gracious you are. In a season of thanks and showing gratitude, we see just how much for which we have to be thankful. We're thankful for this community, this city, the people that call Sumter home. As we prepare for the future and think about the city of Sumter, we pray for unity. In a time where our world feels divided, we pray that our city would be unified. We pray that Sumter would be a city that is known for more of how we come together than how we separate. We pray that we would be a place where people always feel at home and cared for by the people that make up this city. We pray that Sumter would be a light to our state, our nation, and the world, that we would be a place where all races and all generations are unified. That we would be a place where all races and all generations are unified together. We thank you for the words of Paul to the Philippians church, where he says, "Then make my joy complete by being like-minded, having the same love, being in one spirit and one mind." Father, make us like-minded. Give us a deep love for each other and give us all a united spirit. Lord, give us strength to set aside our differences and strive for a greater cause, for a greater objective. Let us live our days with grace and compassion for the fellow man as we stand together and fight against division. Father, we believe that you are a God of unity, a God who has made mankind for the purpose of being together. And we ask that you continue to shape us into men and women who seek these things and these ideals. We thank you for this city, for the leadership in this city, and for the future you see for Sumter. We trust you. Unite us and strengthen us. In this is your name we pray, amen. We stand dismissed. Thank you.